Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Ferndale City Council meeting for Monday, March the 12th. I would like to call the meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation, my God, and the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Galloway.
Here.
Mr. Lennon is absent. Mr. Martin.
Here.
Ms. Piana.
Here.
Mayor Coulter.
Here, yes, thank you. We have a quorum. Yes, Councilman Lennon was just here, but really not feeling well, and he stuck it out as long as he could, which was not to the beginning of the meeting. So I guess if, could I have a unanimous consent to approve his absence?
Aye.
So move. Support.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Our first order of business, then, would be a presentation of the Ferndale Public Schools. I, approval of the agenda? Oh, no, I'm sorry, I, you know, I do this all the time. I skipped one. We have to approve the agenda first before we get to you, excuse me. Approval of the agenda. Are there any changes, additions, deletions to the agenda this evening?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you.
Second.
Moved by Piana and seconded by Martin. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmembers Galloway.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. The agenda is adopted. Now, presentation, keep, just keeping you on your toes, from our Ferndale Public Schools. And congratulations on your millage election last week.
Thank you. That's my first announcement. My name is Jessica Stauder, Communication Specialist for the Ferndale Public Schools. First, I'd like to say thank you to all the voters in the Ferndale School District for passing the bond proposal with sixty-nine percent of the vote. We're very grateful for the support of the community. I would like to say congratulations to FHS senior Chavez Ferris. He finished second in the state in one-hundred-and-seventy-one-pound wrestling. It is his third year of all-state finishes. He finished sixth as a sophomore, third as a junior, and now finished his senior year second in the state, so very proud of him. Congratulations to our boys bowling team, finished third in the state. And one of the bowlers, Leon Hussein, finished eighth in the state individual competition. Our Ferndale High School boys and girls varsity basketball teams both won district championships. And in the championship games, they both played University High School, city rivals. So it was really exciting, close games, and we congratulate all of our Eagles on a great season. A lot of events to tell the community about, to save the date. The first is this Thursday, the Ferndale Education Foundation's annual fundraising party at Boogie Fever in Ferndale. It's six to ten p.m. Tickets are twenty-five dollars at the door. They can be purchased at any school office. If tickets are purchased before Thursday morning, the, anyone who purchases will be entered into a raffle drawing for VIP seating at Boogie Fever. We are also selling raffle tickets to benefit the FBF. Ten-dollar tickets give you a chance to win five thousand dollars. All proceeds benefit the students and teachers in the Ferndale schools. Raffle tickets are available at any school office, the night of the event, and from any FBF trustee. We have more information on this event and who the trustees are and where you can buy tickets on our website, which is ferndalschools.org/FEF. This Saturday, March seventeenth, is opening night for Grease, the Ferndale High School Spring Musical. The students have been rehearsing, and they are ready to, to show the community their play. The kids are so excited this year. And tickets are seven dollars for adults, five dollars for students or seniors, and three dollars for children under twelve. The shows are Saturday, March seventeenth, Sunday, March eighteenth, Friday, March twenty-third, Saturday, March twenty-fourth, and Sunday, March twenty-fifth. Friday and Saturday shows are at seven-thirty p.m., and Sunday shows are at three p.m. It's in the Ferndale High School auditorium. It also features this year, the musical's doing something different, and they have special events at every performance, including the hand-jive raffle at every show. So for a dollar, the community can enter to win the hand-jive raffle. They will be taken backstage at intermission, learn how to do the dance, and be onstage during the show.
Wow. I think the chief wants to do one. I'm not doing that.
On Thursday, March twenty-second, Friends of University High School has their launch party from six to nine p.m. at the Loving Touch in Ferndale. Friends of University High School is raising funds for students at UHS to ensure that they continue to have dual-enrollment college prep opportunities. Tickets are twenty-five dollars for general admission, seventy-five dollars to be a live auction participant, and a hundred-and-fifty dollars for a plus-one live auction advantage. Live entertainment will be provided by Al Ayoub on guitar with Charlie Latimer on vocals, Brian Cleary on piano, and Bobby Murray on guitar. The event will feature live and silent auction, hors d'oeuvres, beer and wine tasting. Some of the auction items include a signed sting guitar, an Elton John album, and a signed Aqua Lung album. On Thursday, March twenty-ninth, the Ferndale High School staff will be taking on the Ferndale Police Department in a game of dodgeball. So we invite the community to come out and enjoy that. It will be at the Ferndale High School Gym at six p.m. Tickets are five dollars for adults and three dollars for students. The event sponsors is supported by the Eagles Pledge, which is a group dedicated to raising funds to help graduates of Ferndale High School in post-secondary education. And finally, Tuesday, April tenth, the Western Michigan University Symphony Band will be performing a joint concert with the Ferndale High School Wind Ensemble. It's Tuesday, April tenth, at seven-thirty p.m. in the Ferndale High School auditorium. One of Ferndale's alumni, Elizah Abalos, is one of the graduate assistants for the Western Michigan Group, and will be conducting a few pieces. The band director says this should be one of the best concerts ever performed on the Ferndale High School stage. It's a free concert for anyone in the community. And finally, the Ferndale Schools put out weekly newsletters. They look like this. If anyone's interested in signing up to receive the weekly newsletters, you can email fpsfanout@ferndalschools.org, and like us, and join us on Twitter and Facebook.
Great. Lots of good stuff going on at the schools. Thank you. Our next presentation is from the Downtown Development Authority. Is some, Christina, are you representing the DDA?
We're just going to defer to the next president.
Okay, fair enough. Which is our next item of business, then, which would be a public hearing on an amendment to the DDA's tax increment financing and downtown development plan. So first, let me call the public hearing to order. It is called to order at seven-thirty-seven. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address counsel on the adoption of this plan?
My name is Jason Fowler. I'm here representing the Woodward Avenue Action Association this evening. For those of you not familiar, we are a nonprofit dedicated to preserving, promoting, and enhancing the Woodward corridor and are guardians of the National Scenic Byway designation and All-American Road designation. I'm here tonight to support the amendment to the existing TIF plan. Really, what this, this renewal of the nineteen-eighty-one plan is really integral to the continuing efforts to improve the entire corridor. We believe that it is really spearheading an effort that we would like to see expanded throughout the rest of the corridor, and it's very influential, and it's building momentum and partnerships and collaborations for the rest of the corridor. And the past successes that we've been able to do is leverage federal funding for a lot of different programs and projects that the, the TIF plan has been able to support and the DDA has undertook, such as the Wayfinding and the Kiosk Program in downtown Ferndale, and also landscaping improvements back in two thousand and seven. This has also been able to leverage successful partnerships between our organization and the DDA, and bringing outside alliances and partnerships with other organizations and support. So just wanted to say that we are here to support it, and thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, thanks for coming. Anyone else that would like to address this issue during the public hearing? Sherry.
Sherry Wells, three-one-five West Troy. I've attended, maybe missed one out of the last twenty DDA board meetings, and to understand the TIF took a while, and then, once I learned what it was and got a few questions answered, it's not that hard. What it is, is in nineteen-seventy-five, the Michigan Legislature passed the Downtown Development Authority Act and established the tax increment financing to fund it. And in nineteen-eighty, Ferndale City Council passed an ordinance to create it. The perfect reason for this is because the car was a mixed blessing. The, the very car and manufacturer of that, the built-up Ferndale, also led people to be able to live out in suburbs, have shopping malls, and even some of our own residents, who could at one time get anything they wanted from their own downtown, also used those shopping malls. So downtowns became ghost towns. So the DDA concept is to keep that from happening. And my very simple chart, what it did is established a base, a tax base in nineteen-eighty-one. Whatever the city and the county were getting from business taxes in nineteen-eighty-one was capped. Anything that the increase in values came up with was reinvested back through the DDA, but also, as he had pointed out, leveraged too. They have been able to get grants that they've been able to do matchings for. And one of the things I've noticed with the school district and, and the city and the DDA is, we don't hear enough about all of the grants they get. The amount of money, the police department is really good on making sure that we know what they've done in getting grants, but the rest of them just don't. And the DDA is guilty of that, too, and not really letting us know how much money they pull into our city. It just slides over it. So this TIF, as it's called, is not a tax. It doesn't take money from the city fund. There's a lot of city services that they do perform, and it's done a very, very good job, and the DDA still has more work that it can do, because there's, there's many of us would like to see more of the things downtown that are daily needs that we have.
We're close to three minutes, too, Sherry.
Good, okay. So I support this being continued. And one thing, too, the city's never, the city's tac, cap has never gone below, and I think that's because the DDA, whether clause or catalyst, has been able to keep it certainly no less than that level. Thank you.
Thanks, Sherry. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing, and we will now introduce Item A, which is the amendment to the DDA TIF and Downtown Development Plan. And Christina, are you going to present this item? Thank you.
Thanks, and good evening, counsel. Christina Scheparducius, Ferndale DDA Executive Director. And you'll have to excuse my coughing. I am getting over a cold, but my part's going to be short tonight because of that. So I want to first start off. Downtown Ferndale, you know, back in its heydays of the nineteen-twenty's through the sixty's, was a bustling downtown. It was a place that basically middle America truly called home and did business. People walked around. They took the railcar to downtown Ferndale in the early nineteen-twenty's. But as we went through the years, by nineteen-seventies, the beginning of mulling of America really hit downtown Ferndale hard. From seventies until the late nineties, we saw a rapid decline and disinvestment in downtown Ferndale. When I started in two thousand, we had over thirty percent vacancy rate. That fabulous Ferndale mantra was really a big joke. And property, a lot of properties, obviously, were very much neglected and abandoned throughout the downtown area. Some of the photos there kind of show you a little bit of what was there, but it was a majority of our downtown area. There was a great sense of loss of place. So our residents were really finding that this was not their downtown anymore, that this wasn't the place that they wanted it to be. And they began to look elsewhere for quality businesses, as well as looking to move out as well. And one big thing is that many people have said, is that you could literally roll a bowling ball down Nine Mile and not hit anyone on the street. Very empty. And today, things are very, very different. But that evolution really began in nineteen-eighty, when, and I'm going to skip over the Main Street program stuff. Oops, did I go too fast? All right, we're going to go back to, um, sorry, I feel like I'm missing a slide. Huh, maybe I am. But in the nineteen-eighties, we had, as a city, the city of Ferndale, established the Downtown Development Authority, based on the act that Sherry already stated earlier. And that was a choice that city had made. By nineteen-eighty-one, we had developed a tax increment financing plan in order to fund downtown Ferndale and reinvest in the downtown and hopefully grow our entire area. Also, in nineteen-eighty, the National Main Street Center had established itself, and it was a, a program that is focused on downtown revitalization. It includes over two thousand downtowns throughout the U.S., and locally, there are eleven Main Street programs in the county, which Ferndale is one of them, and we started this in two thousand and one. Since two thousand, actually, since two thousand, over the past ten years, we had over fifty-seven million in reinvestment in downtown Ferndale, over twelve hundred net new jobs. We've reduced our vacancy rate down to less than five percent today, as well as over seventy-five percent of our downtown being renovated. We've had thousands of hours of volunteer services, over seventeen-thousand-six-hundred-and-forty-seven hours, which, when you really total that up, it's a heck of a lot more than what's up on that screen. But I think in the end, what you really see is that our property values have risen since nineteen-eighty-one, over two-hundred-and-sixty-eight percent. And in two thousand and ten, Ferndale became one of the great American Main Streets. As a great American Main Street, you're one of five in the nation each year, and it is a major milestone for our community. It recognizes all the efforts that we have made in terms of improving our downtown and what we have really set forth in terms of goals and where we want to go. And we are only one of three in the state of Michigan. In the past year, in two thousand and eleven, we've had one-point-nine-million additional dollars of reinvestment for public and private, thirty-four new businesses, which is a net of twenty, a hundred-and-fifty new jobs, and thirty-two building rehabilitations or modifications, including public improvement projects. We've also seen the wayfinding program come into place as well. And those are all investments that the DDA makes in our downtown. People do often ask, what does the DDA do? And that is a sampling of the results of what we do, but what it is, is really focusing on business revitalization, the commercial core for our entire city. When that commercial core is improved, everybody benefits from that. We provide business startup and assistance, public-private physical improvements and maintenance in our downtown, such as streetscapes, landscaping. We also plant more trees when those poor trees that have died from the ash pour go away. So we're always looking to make improvements along the way, as well as maintain, and as I had mentioned before, signage and other capital improvement projects to really sustain the entire area and make it a much more livable and viable place to be. Environment improvements continue with pocket parks and bike racks to this day. We'll also be introducing new on-street bike racks in the future, and we'll look at more innovative ideas throughout our process as a board as to improving our area. Complete streets and capital improvements are a main part of tax increment financing and what we do as a, as an organization, as well as promotions and marketing of the downtown. There are so many things that we do in terms of marketing in our downtown area, and there's a smattering of them, including our social media, which is really growing, but our events are also really speaking volumes as well. One of the biggest things, I think, from all of this is that we have changed the identity of downtown Ferndale for all. It is now a place that people are proud to call home and proud to say, I am from Ferndale. Without our volunteers, we would not be here today, though, as well. It is truly about grassroots, community building, and we have over forty volunteers, active volunteers throughout the year helping us out. And at this time, I would like all of our volunteers to stand up. They truly are the glue, they're also the fun of what is downtown Ferndale. They inspire us every single day, and they challenge us every single day, too. But I think that is what makes us tick and what makes us, makes downtown Ferndale the best place it can be, a place for you as a resident and a visitor. So back to where this all started. As I had mentioned, back in the nineteen-eighties, starting with the DDA and the tax increment financing plan in nineteen-eighty-one. It is a tool to reinvest in downtown Ferndale, and over the last thirty years, we have amended this plan at council. The TIF district area is smaller than the overall Downtown Development Authority area. It's in the shaded pink area up on the screen. And the borders are Nine Mile from Libanonie to Bermuda, Woodward from Saratoga to Breckenridge, and then Troy Street from Woodward to Allen, and Buster from Woodward to Bermuda. Over time, with a tax increment financing plan and based on the ordinance that's on the books, is that a plan can be amended throughout its time. Currently, it was set to expire in two thousand and thirteen, and that is why we're here today, so that way we can move forward with continuing our revitalization of downtown Ferndale. And a plan can be amended as many times and carried on for as long as counsel sees, and sees the need and the value of that. The TIF plan itself, what it is, is basically a financial plan for the development projects that you would want to see in the district happen, and things that you would probably already want to do anyways as a city to redevelop your downtown. And through these plans, it will ensure that redevelopment does happen, and it doesn't sit idly by and wait for something to hit them in the head. With that, we, as a board, had started this process over a year and a half ago, and hired Berkshire Royal to come in and help us to amend the plan. And at this time, I would like to introduce David Berkshire, Principal at Berkshire Royal, to come up and present the plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Christina.
I couldn't help but wonder tonight during the school district presentation whether anyone in this room, except me, knew the significance of a signed Aqua Lung album. I guess that shows my age. Although I have a thirty-year-old son, who I think has every Death Row tall album ever recorded. In nineteen-seventy-five, our legislature chose a very unfortunate name for this revitalization strategy, because TIF is not a tax. Tax increment financing captures existing tax revenue, much of which would ordinarily leave Ferndale, and invest it in public improvements here in the city. Twenty-two percent of the DDA's captured revenue would ordinarily kind of leak out of Ferndale to other taxing jurisdictions. Local and county captured revenues are further enhanced by a specific tax on the businesses, as well as grants, sponsorships, and fees that are only possible because Ferndale has an effective DDA. The investment of ci, of city revenues each year produces approximately three-quarters of a million dollars in public improvements, downtown programs, and those thousands of hours of volunteer services that you heard talked about this evening. The updated development plan, and this, as Christina indicated, is something that's been in the works for well over a year. The updated development plan identifies what's working and what needs work in the downtown. It identifies development and redevelopment opportunities. It looked at traffic and parking improvements that would stimulate economic growth, among a number of other major issues. The process that we used in going through the update of the, of the Development and Tax Increment Financing Plan included a traffic and streetscape analysis by our technical team. It involved stakeholder meetings with businesses and residents here in the city, community forums, consumer surveys. And out of that grew a set of principles for a healthy downtown that are embodied in that development plan, in the work of Ferndale's Main Street program, and are clearly working, as evidenced by the city's Great American Main Street Award, just as a single example. There are many examples, but that, that was really a, a crowning glory for this community. The plan offers concrete examples of what the downtown is doing well. We, we paid a lot of attention to the things that you do very well in this plan. But in addition, it is an honest assessment of those things that we must improve in order to maintain a competitive edge, and that's critically important in this age that we live in of competition between communities, between shopping centers, between power centers, and big-box stores, and internet marketing, and all of that. The work is not finished because of a single Main Street Award. Ferndale's competition never sleeps, and so Ferndale can't either. The plan proj, the plan, the plan's projects will help improve property values and ensure success, and those projects are broken down into three components. They're categorized as development, streetscape, or traffic and parking. The development projects have a primary purpose, to increase values in the district, thereby enhancing revenues, then reinvesting that increase back into the district. Some program examples include things like DDA purchase and redevelopment of property, facilitating and/or participating in public-private partnerships, and marketing available properties to the private sector. The plan includes existing and new development services, such as design assistance, incentives for specific development, and site acquisition. In the streetscapes, uh, streetscape projects category, the DDA makes physical improvements for safety and to enhance the pedestrian experience downtown. These will result in making Ferndale a more attractive place to live, to do business, and to just generally enjoy life. Some proposed streetscape projects have virtually no cost, like the proposed public art program in the plan, while others require significant investment. And it's that investment that's the reason why tax increment financing is so important. Many of the DDA's projects would ordinarily require city council funding, things such as traffic and pedestrian safety improvements to Nine Mile Road. You can't ignore the need for those, and yet, the DDA is in a position to step in and help and make many of those improvements as a result of this plan and as a result of tax increment financing. In the traffic and parking projects category, the plan supports a regional approach for Woodward Avenue, working with local, county, regional, and state partners. And we heard one of those partners, Woodward Avenue Action Association, tonight, who supported the plan. The DDA plan supports the city's non-motorized transportation network plan in spirit and with funding from captured TIF revenues. So there are projects proposed in that plan that are supportive of your non-motorized The plan looks into the future with proposals to increase available parking and help decrease congestion. The plan includes proposals to help visitors and residents find their way around town, and to help businesses develop partnerships for their common good. The plan provides funding for a variety of future safety studies of traffic, both vehicular and pedestrian. The updated development and TIF plan proposes a continuation of the success of the past thirty years, and for at least the next twenty. The plan's conservative estimate of growth, and we were careful to not overestimate the, the, the growth based on what's happened in the economy in the last few years. The conservative estimate, estimate of growth projects that twelve million dollars will be reinvested in public improvements, that the growth and taxable value that results from this reinvestment stays here in Ferndale. Extending the life of the tax increment finance authority will allow Ferndale to retain, by our estimate, two-and-a-half million dollars. by our estimate, $2.5 million that would otherwise leave the city. The plan must be poised to leverage public investment at just the right moment, and toward that goal, the plan identifies properties that have unique development or redevelopment As an example, redevelopment of the Withington parking lot could, could open up nearby underutilized properties for new private investment. This one example shows how a four-story mixed-use building on a 20,000-square-foot lot could be expected to generate $12 million in market value, $6 million in taxable value, and bring $180,000 of new revenue into the city. Tax Increment Financing pays for public improvements with an enhanced revenue stream, thereby stretching public dollars. It actually enables the city to meet some of its master plan goals with revenues that are raised within the downtown. Christina talked about how fashionable Ferndale used to be, somewhat of a tongue-in-cheek reference. Now, when people think of Ferndale, they think of a community that's on the move, that is no longer the butt of the fabulous Ferndale joke. In closing, I'd just like to reinforce that the competition never stops, and the city and its DDA must be vigilant to prevent the decline of downtown that would hurt the city's neighborhoods. The benefits of your DDA and your Tax Increment Finance Authority are visible and measurable. The DDA and the TIFA are critical elements to ensure Ferndale's long-term sustainability. Everyone is focused right now on placemaking, and that's the new buzzword all over the country, and certainly in this state. And I just would like to point out that, from my perspective, as a planner with forty years of experience serving communities in Michigan, Ferndale already owns a sense of place.
Thank you, David. Does that conclude the presentation, Christina?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
And in your packet is the ordinance for amendment.
Is, I'm sorry?
Is the ordinance for amendment.
Yes, thank you. All right. Well, to begin, we need a motion. Unless there's questions, I guess we could start with that. If there are specific questions that you have of either David or Christina, ask those now, otherwise, just general discussion, we should wait until after a motion.
I'll ask a question I know the answer to, only because, as I've been asked this a number of times today, that this is simply the renewal of the existing district, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, could I ask a question?
Of course, Dan.
Christina, in reviewing your memo, I didn't see, did notices go to the taxing jurisdictions?
Yes, they did.
Okay. Thank you, I just wanted to make sure that that was.
Yes.
And maybe, I asked Scott this, but assuming that he didn't give me the right answer, I'm sure he did. This is for twenty years?
Twenty, twenty years, or upon amendment.
And is twenty years, Dan, the maximum that you can ask for?
Twenty would be a typical period of time.
Would be typical.
Yes.
Is there a maximum?
Normally, contracts beyond thirty years, franchises, the city is limited with respect to extending franchises for thirty years, and there'd be some argument that you shouldn't go beyond thirty years.
Gotcha, thank you. Just to be clear, so we're, we're proposing to extend the existing TIF for twenty years and adopt the plan that is presented by.
Right. And language in the ordinance says twenty years or as amended by council.
Ah, okay. Thank you. Additional questions of clarification? All right, is there a motion?
Sure. I move to adopt ordinance number 1122 to amend Chapter 19, Urban Redevelopment, Article 5, Development Plans, Sections 19 through 51, and 1952 to adopt the Tax Increment Financing and Development Plan.
Second. Or two, sorry. Then moved by Piana and just barely supported by Galloway, so, all right, we have a motion to support, we can have a discussion on this item if council chooses.
If I may, through the chair? I approach this really at the high level, and the question I've asked myself, is this the right economic development strategy for the city for the next twenty years? And to me, it's pretty obvious that it is. And it has worked well for the last twenty, with a lot of results produced in the last ten. And I think that going forward, this sets a nice path for us to follow in order to see some new results for promoting growth in the downtown.
Thank you. Additional?
I would just, you know, also add in second that I think what's happened in the last ten years in downtown areas has been remarkable, and I think this, this plan is congruent with that and gladly support it.
I would just add, I mean, I've been a resident for 21 years now, and the development of our downtown is nothing short of remarkable. I agree with everything, Christina, that you shared with us tonight, and, and I think the TIF is the single biggest catalyst to making that happen, and so I'm happy to support it. I think it'll be an effective, I think you asked the right question. It was the right tool, is it still the right tool? Yep, I think it is, and I think it will be for the next twenty years. I think one thing that gets lost a little bit, we like the fact that it captures other taxing jurisdictions' dollars, and that's true. It also captures some Ferndale general fund dollars over the years. I don't think we should get lost. The city is making an investment with this decision. Granted, it doesn't, it's dollars that don't leave Ferndale, but it's dollars that are redirected to the downtown. I don't think that should be lost. It is an investment that we're making tonight in our downtown, and that I do support making because the results have spoken for themselves, so I am supportive.
Well, if I may add, well, the second question I asked are also, are these the right projects to spur future growth under the TIF plan? And I think that we're on the right track there as well. I also know that the DDA Board has the flexibility to amend the TIF plan, so if a project is deemed something that we need to deprioritize or eliminate altogether, that the DDA Board of Directors puts motions forward to amend that plan. So there is some flexibility to, to add new things over time as they warrant review.
And last, I would just thank so many of the DDA Board members and volunteers for coming out tonight. It's nice to see you. Thank you for, once again, showing your support. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmembers Martin?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you, that item is adopted. Thank you. Next item of business this evening is Call to Audience. As you know, Call to Audience is the audience's opportunity to address council on any item that's not on the agenda. If there's items on the agenda that you'd like to address, you can address those at the time that, of the, on the agenda. You get three minutes now. Give us your name, your address, or write your address in the back for the purposes of our clerk. We'll do thirty minutes now, and if we need more time at the end of the meeting, I'll reopen Call to Audience at that time. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to address council at this time? Okay, this would be a first in my.
There's no cheering.
There's no event.
Not typically a shy group, right? Okay, really, no one from Call to Audience this evening? All right. Hearing none? We'll move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda are items that council considers routine and enacts in one motion. If there is, but this is also the opportunity, if there's anything on the consent agenda that I, that members of the audience would like to address, this would be the time to do that as well. But first, let me read the consent agenda. Item A, approval of the minutes of the special meeting held February 27, 2012, and the regular meeting held February 27, 2012, is submitted by our clerk. B, approval to purchase one in-car motor, digital computer, software, and accessories from Dell for a total amount of $3,557.53 from the drug forfeiture account, and to increase the drug forfeiture capital budget by the same amount, as submitted by our Chief of Police. C, approval of the interlocal agreement for the Oakland County Tactical Training Consortium, also submitted by our Police Chief. D, approval to exercise the option, the option year 2013 of the street pavement repairs contract with the Hartwell Cement Company of Oak Park. And E, approval of the bills and payrolls as certified by the city manager to be paid, subject to the review of the Council Finance Committee. Council pleasure on the consent agenda.
So I would like to ask that we remove consent agenda, item A, please.
Item A, which we will add to the regular agenda. Thank you very much. Any other items to be removed or addressed by the audience this evening? If not, a motion on the consent agenda would be in order.
I would move that we adopt the consent agenda in its entirety, with the exception of item A.
Second. Moved by Galloway, supported by Martin. Further discussion? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you, the consent agenda is adopted. Now, moving on to the regular agenda. Item A, consideration to approve a second school resource officer assigned to Taft School. City Manager, are you gonna introduce that item for us? Thank you.
The city has been in conversation with the Ferndale Public Schools about adding an additional school resource officer at Taft School. And both the Chief, Collins, and I have met with Ferndale Public Schools many times to discuss this opportunity, and came to an agreement of a 75-25 split for a full-time police officer, of which we would call from, back off of recall, that we had laid off previously. And this person, this officer would be dedicated solely to Taft Education Center. So I don't know if Chief would like to talk a little bit about the role that that officer would play, and can go from there?
Certainly. Thank you for the opportunity to explain this to the board, but we have, this discussion began after a critical incident that occurred at Taft Education Center last December. We spoke with the superintendent, and we both came up with, with a thought that this would, would not only enhance our ability to respond to those type of incidents at the Taft Center, but it would also, we believe, have a quieting effect, both for the neighborhood and for the school itself. In addition to that, we, with the success of our school resource officer at Ferndale High School, we would incorporate many of the same projects that, that we have at FHS at this facility, and we would be able to share this officer with University High School on an as-needed basis. But primarily, this officer's time would be spent at, the school time would be spent at Taft Education Center. The part that enhances law enforcement for the city itself, which is why the city has proposed to, or we have proposed that the city pay 25% of this bill, is that we would then have that officer at our beck and call in the, during the school year when the school is out of session, such as extended holidays, teacher improvement days, when the school is closed for instruction. That officer would come back to us in that period of time, and that officer would, in this case, be placed on the road, in the road patrol. During the summer months, after the officers may or may not elect to take a summer vacation, we would, again, take that officer, because that's the time of the year that we are, our manpower is on a strain because of vacations. We'll be able to take that officer and put that officer into a uniform role and enhance our street presence during the summertime, when we need them the most. We intend to do that with the change to twelves, to do that with both school resource officers, and, and place those into patrol functions. So it is, it would be a, you know, I hate to use the term, but a win-win, but to me, it's a win-win for both, both the school district and for us on many different levels.
Questions for clarification purposes of council?
Chief, if we were to have some sort of major incident within the city that wasn't based at the school, would we be able to pull that person, with that officer off to handle a hostage situation at the rail tower?
Yes, and we've, and we've done that with the school resource officer position, not routinely, but there, there have been times that even, even simplistically, during the lunch hour, when the school resource officer is in the vicinity of the school, checking on the exterior in a patrol car, that they have engaged in non-school-related police functions. But in the case of a critical incident, it's always all hands on deck. If we had to pull them, we would pull them. So yes, we would have the ability to utilize that officer for, for a purpose like that. I wouldn't like to pull them to do a bark-and-dog run. But of course, anything that, of significance, we could use them at our, at our need.
Other questions? Otherwise, a motion would be in order.
A move that we authorize an intergovernmental agreement with the Ferndale Public Schools for an additional school resource officer for the Taft Education Center.
Is there a second? Move by Martin, supported by Galloway. Comments on this item? Other questions?
Through the chair? I appreciate the school district absorbing a significant portion of the cost of this school officer, especially after the city terminated that position due to budget cuts. And I think the need was there, and it was a difficult decision that the city council had to make a year ago, so I'm, I feel very fortunate that we've come together on a partnership with them to make this happen.
Absolutely. Agreed. What she said.
We also may be able to use them in the dodgeball game that's coming up.
Wow, it's not a ringer, is it? Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmembers Galloway?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. A second motion would also be in order on this item.
I would move that we authorize staff to proceed with recalling a police officer for the purpose of filling the school resource officer position for the Taft Education Center.
Second. Moved by Galloway, supported by Martin. And Chief, could you just maybe briefly describe how that process works, just for the edification of?
Well, we, we have, in anticipation of this occurring, we have talked to the next officer in line. There's currently four officers on layoff. Officer Jim Ferris, who's currently working at Hazel Park, will, if offered, probably take this position almost assuredly. And he would, we would have to send him back for his, because he is currently working as, as a law enforcement officer, and his licensing has not expired, so we will not have to send him to the academy, or for a, for a refresher academy. So we will be sending him for the required physical evaluation, and we could, we're hoping to have, if this is approved by the school board, to have this in place before the start of April, if not sooner.
Excellent, nice.
But it's, this will be fairly quickly, we kind of learned from the last time, there's not a lot of hoops to jump through, and those hoops, we've kind of like already pre-jumped, so we're, we're ready to go, if it, if it is passed by the school board, which I anticipate will be.
And they will be taken in front of their board on Monday, March 19th.
That's correct.
The board will be. Excellent, thank you. Other questions or comments? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmembers Martin?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you, that item passes. Thanks, Chief. Regular agenda, item B, is a consideration to fill the recreation director position. City Manager, you want to introduce that one as well?
Well, back in early November, Julie Hall had put in her resignation as Director of Recreation for the City of Ferndale. In that time, Jill Manchek has taken over as interim director while we researched different options and how we want to, to handle that open position. Of course, with, with the efforts of collaboration and/or just budget issues in general, anytime that anybody leaves, the city takes that opportunity to look at some of our options and service delivery and how we go about that. We are looking right now at forming a partnership with Oak Park in programming areas, as well as sharing of staff. We were looking at possibly sharing a director, but have decided to hold off on that portion of collaboration, but continue on in the sharing of programming and general recreation. So with that, I would like to move forward with filling the open position that was left by Ms. Hall, and I will go forward with permission with council, the, the normal recruitment process, and I will be looking at internal candidates as well. So I am seeking permission to fill that position.
Excellent. Are there questions? A motion would be in order.
I move to authorize the city manager to hire a recreation director.
Support?
Moved by Piana, supported by Galloway. Any comments?
Through the chair? I just think we have an awesome hiring process, and I know it will be fair and consistent, and that will pick the best candidate for us.
All right, Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. Hire away.
Regular agenda, item C, is a consideration to
Regular agenda, item C, is a consideration to sell the city-owned property at 803 East Breckenridge. Is that Derek? Derek Delacorte, I think, is here to introduce this item. Good evening, Derek.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council. We are here making a recommendation to move forward with negotiations in regards to the sale of a property at 803 East Breckenridge. Several months ago, the city was approached, first by Allied Printing, who is actually mentioned in the staff memo, and another company that directly abut the property the city owns, about the potential for purchase. We received two purchase offers. We did speak with the city attorney regarding the city's ability to enter into negotiations or sell a property without submitting it for an RFP, or submitting an RFP for it. He indicated to us that that was acceptable under the city's charter and that we could move forward with the two companies we were speaking with. And we did, we spent quite a bit of time talking with both of them about what their interests with the property were. Our goal as staff was to determine what, not only what the best price for the property was, but how the property could assist either company in reinvesting in the area or in the city, how that would facilitate growth with either company. And ultimately, through the process, we are making a recommendation that the city move forward in negotiations with Allied. They were the first company to approach the city. Their initial offer was the highest, and we feel, based on the configuration of properties over there, the other company does own several other underutilized or vacant properties in the area that would help facilitate development of their growth. Allied is almost built out on the parcel in the area, and this would, this would help them expand in that area and provide some additional reinvestment to the city. So the motion you have in front of you is one to allow staff, along with the mayor, to consider, or to continue negotiations with Allied, and ultimately, if the conditions identified in the staff memo and the resolution are met, enter into a contract agreement. That is certainly not something council has to give us the permission now to do. We put it in the motion as a recommendation that if you're comfortable that those conditions are met, it would negate the need for the final purchase agreement to come back to council. But if you, we certainly understand if council wants us to bring back the final agreement before entering into it as well. So we did give you that option, but would certainly understand if you took it out of there. The three conditions we are proposing relate to reversion of the property if it's not used for additional expansion. Again, as staff, our goal was to ensure that that property was used to help facilitate development of those existing companies in the area. We had concerns that down the road, if other options became available, we wanted to be involved if the property was going to be sold to a third party that we weren't aware of. So we've talked about that with Allied, and they're willing to talk about the process for that and the mechanism for that. The city attorney has drafted a purchase agreement as an example for council's consideration in regards to that and how that would work. We're certainly open to other options as we move forward. But the idea is if the property's not used in association with additional development in the area, that the city would be able to retain or take back that property and reevaluate how it was used in the future. The other condition is that it be used in association with their existing property on Hilton Road. Again, the intent of this and the reason we've gone about it in this way is to make sure it's used to facilitate expansion of companies in that area. So we want to make sure it can't be separated at a later date and used for some other purpose. And the third condition is that the city receive a, or work with Allied to get a third-party appraisal that validates the offer price on the property. So with that, I'm here to answer any question. We have representatives from Allied Printing here as well, who are able to answer any questions, and thank you.
Maybe could, you know, since you came all the way out tonight, if the folks from Allied want to just come up and say hi and speak very briefly to your interest in the property, that would be much appreciated. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Margaret Fitzgerald. I'm Vice President of Finance at Allied. I've been with the company for 13 years. I brought with me our President, David Bader. He is our President, manages our sales operation, and I also brought Mr. Tony Palk, who's VP of Operations, has been with the company over 25 years. And everything Derek has to tell you about our interest in the property is absolutely true. Bottom line is, we can't afford to be boxed in if we're going to continue the growth that we are currently experiencing in a very constricted economic environment. We've had double-digit growth in the last three years alone. There's been a lot of contraction in our industry, and we've, through the foresight of some of my colleagues, have been able to develop additional core capabilities around things that are sort of outside the print world but still related to it that have allowed us to grow. We have not just a local and a state imprint, but we have a national imprint and a fine list of commercial clients who have come to rely on us quite heavily across all of our core services, not just print, but mail, fulfillment, distribution. If we're going to continue to grow in the way that we are certain that we can, and that's been demonstrated by our balance sheet in the last couple of years and our income statement, we're going to need to expand our facilities. That means we're going to have to look at building out our Hilton facility to accommodate the additional production there, and that's going to make it very difficult for the folks who work there to find a place to park. So that would be step A. We're looking at what we might be able to do to expand Hilton, but key to that is going to be having a place for not only our employees to come and park, but our clients as well, who are back and forth for press checks and, you know, consultations with our data department and that sort of thing. So, you know, I certainly have lots of statistics here that I can give you. I've submitted several letters to Mr. Delacorte in the city to really plead our case, but we've been here for 60 years. Okay, good. Well, we've been here for 60 years, and we plan here to be here for a whole lot more, and certainly would like the city's assistance in making that happen.
Appreciate it, thank you. And especially in this environment, in your industry, which has been battered, great to hear the good news that you're experiencing growth. That's wonderful to hear. Is there anyone, by the way, from Madison Heights? I'm sorry, Madison?
Madison Heights Class.
Heights Class here.
No, I spoke with their owner this afternoon about it. He indicated he didn't think he would be here tonight. We've had constant dialogue with both parties throughout the process. We made them aware of what staff recommendation was going to be. They are intending, or at least indicating they're intending to move forward with the property they have options on, which is identified on the map you have in your packet. And they seem to be understanding. I mean, I certainly think they were interested in the property, but we've let them know we will work with them as well to make sure they're able to expand to their greatest extent with the property they have in that area as well. So we did speak with them this afternoon.
Thanks, Derek. Are there any specific questions from council? Yeah.
In the recommended action, the first bullet point, that the, you know, the purchase agreement needs to include a mechanism agreed to by the committee and purchaser that the property reverts back to the city, if not used in a manner consistent with the intent of the sale, as represented by the purchaser. And then, up above the conditions, it reads that if the property is not used to facilitate additional expansion in jobs or investment in, or expansion of existing facilities, that the property revert back to the city. Those don't seem entirely consistent to me. It seems like perhaps...
You mean for a parking lot?
Well, is that the express intent of the purchase, to build a parking lot, and is that going to necessarily lead to more jobs and facility expansion up above, as described above? I guess what I'm getting at is, I'd just like to, that's, you know, a drafting problem or something that can be addressed. But I'd like to approve the sale in concept and then have the contract come back to us, since some of these provisions in here with the property referring back to the city, I would just like to see before approving.
And that's fine. We wholly anticipated that. We certainly left it in there in case you were comfortable and wanted us to move forward without it coming back. But we have no problem with that, and we can certainly clean that up and be a little more specific about exactly what that means as we go forward.
I guess I could just imagine a situation where if down the road, things don't go quite the way as we envision them here this evening, that it's going to be a difficult decision to pull the trigger and say that we're going to take that property back. I'd just like to have everybody, make sure everybody's on the same page and it's very clearly defined at what conditions that would take place, so there's no disputes later on.
And we agree. That's, there's no problem with that. I think we needed to get to this step so we could move on with negotiations and start to identify what those triggers are with Allied, and we have no problem with that.
Thanks. All right. Other questions or clarification?
No, I just want to acknowledge Derek in this process. It's not that often that municipality gets an opportunity for land assembly, and he did a great job in trying to work with both companies and bring a recommendation to city council. He's very creative and innovative in his, in his options, so I appreciate his time and effort in this.
Agreed, thank you. All right. A motion would be in order then, at this point?
I would move that city council direct the mayor, city manager, city attorney, and staff to continue negotiations for the sale of 803 East Breckenridge with Allied Printing and in a manner consistent with the memo dated March 12, 2012, as included in the council packet.
Support.
The move by Galloway, supported by Piana.
Oh, I didn't include in my motion, but the clear intent was to bring it back to council for approval before executing the necessary documents of sale.
Understood.
Support. Councilwoman Piana with that addition?
Yes.
Okay. All right, discussion on this item.
Through the chair?
Yes.
I would just like to echo that I think Derek did a fantastic job, but I think we have companies here who have two different types of facilities. They have a headquarters, and then they may have a production facility located somewhere else in our industrial district. Garden Fresh Salsa is the same, has the same issues, and I think the way that we're solving these and helping these businesses grow is really, is really great in how we're, how we're approaching it. So that's the type of philosophy and approach to creative problem solving that I have always wanted the city to push forward, so.
Agreed. Thank you, thank you. All right, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmembers Galloway?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you very much. That item is adopted. Thanks, Derek.
Mr. Mayor, just quickly, I'd like to say thank you to both Allied and Madison Heights. This process, and at some points intentionally dragged on, as the city kind of debated with itself over what was the best option. We had two very good companies, and there was no wrong decision here. There was two right ones, and it was, it was difficult to make a recommendation. And both companies were very patient with the city as we went forward. I'm not sure they would agree that I did such a great job in getting them here, but we just wanted to, yeah, we just wanted to acknowledge both of them as well. They're both great companies, and they're both expanding, so thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much, and thanks for coming tonight. Appreciate it. And continued success and good luck. Next regular agenda item is item D, consideration to adopt ordinances numbers 1119, 1120, and 1121, ordinances amending Chapter 7 Business Regulations of the Ferndale Code of Ordinances. And this is the first of two ordinances relating to concessionaire and street vendor items, and so this would be an appropriate time if there's anyone from the audience who would like to address either of these items to approach now. Yes.
You know, I brought some pictures here. Would you mind passing these up there? Can I bring these forward?
Sure, of course.
Okay. I've got seven. I want to show the group one here. Pictures kind of, it's a thousand words, you know, but there's only six here. Would you get my share?
That's fine. We can do that.
This is actually a picture of me hot dog vending on the corner of 9th and Woodward. I want you guys all to see what a hot dog vendor should look like. The old-fashioned hot dog vendor. Everybody can appreciate that. But what this is...
That is a great picture, actually. Sorry, the folks at home can't see that, but it's...
Yeah. If I knew it was electronic, I'd have sent one electronically. And this is for the new proposal we're talking about, about sending the vendors over to the alleyway, which I just found about, and I'm really addressing you, because you asked last week if any of us were, any of the vendors were aware of this or what we thought.
I did, I did.
So I looked at the ordinances, and I'm coming back on this. And I live in Pleasant Ridge. My name's Bob George Jeff. And I've ended out on 9th and Woodward, and that wasn't very, really lucrative for me on the normal weekdays. Really, the reason I was there is to get into the special events, and I work with the Rust Belt to be on private property. But I'm trying to dedicate myself to Honda of Ferndale. I was there, you know, for a couple hundred dollars on a Saturday to kind of say, can I create an image here? And by the end of the summer, I did start to create an image. And again, I didn't make very much, but I really started to set a standard with that look and so forth, and that was my goal. Underdog, my competitor, was on that, by that alleyway, and I think they're pretty much, I think they've actually sold out.
I believe they sold out.
You guys?
Yes.
And I'm not sure. It's because they made so much money in that alleyway, they could sell out. So I just wanted to make that clear. Because after thinking about that a little bit, I didn't do very well out there on the corner on a normal Saturday. Not enough for me to actually be there all the time. And I was out in as open as I could be. I mean, that corner was the most exposed corner. We were kind of challenged. In fact, myself and Underdog kind of had an understanding. We'd work that back and forth a little bit. And I spent a lot of time out there developing that. I really think if you put us in that alleyway, and I don't know if there's a plethora of vendors in here that want to be in that alleyway, I think long-term, maybe four or five years down the road, if you have Neon going, everybody knows that's there, that might work out. But to start out, I think we wouldn't have very much lucrative days. I don't think people are seeking us out at that point. Maybe somewhere in the future they will. And I know bigger cities, you know, Kansas City, Chicago, New York, they don't hide their vendors. They actually make them a visual part of the city. They make them be part of that whole thing. If there's a standard for appearance and so forth, I mean, that does have value, I think. And I really think also that there's enough corners out there. It already says in the ordinance that there's a lottery for the corners that are out there. I don't think there's 20, are there 20 vendors fighting for these corners, or are there two or three?
The ordinance has nothing to do with corners.
Okay, okay, that's whatever it is. I'm just saying. I'm just, and so, again, with all this saying, what we're really out there for is the special events, a lot of us. And we've talked about it when Underdog was under the occupants. We wanted to be here for DIY. We wanted to be here for Funky Ferndale. We wanted to be here for Dream Cruise, because really, those are the things where you make some money. I mean, I was willing to stand out there for Saturdays and say, I'll make my image so I could come then. Even under the new ordinance, we're supposed to leave at that point. If we're, if that, those ordinance, if those events come into town, the people that are dedicated to the city and trying to create this image the whole time have to leave when somebody that does some financial institution's coming in and trying to make money. I'm not referring to DIY. I'm referring more to like Funky Ferndale. So again, with this ordinance, I really think that we're going to have failure in that alleyway. In fact, I might try one or two Saturdays. I've already been asked, I think it's kind of a lost cause, because I've already been asked to work with the new ordinance, so I have a feeling I'm fighting an uphill battle here. So, but I'm going to try one or two Saturdays in that alleyway, and then if it doesn't pan out, I can't spend years. I mean, I'm, I've got a full-time job, rentals, family, soccer games, just like everybody else. And I was spending more money to be out there than most of this stuff. So I have a feeling that most of the vendors will be looking elsewhere for special events. That's what most of us do. We look to get in the Royal Oak events or the Berkeley events, any of the big, that's what our real goal is. And those are almost fillish for most of us. And if the city doesn't make them lucrative for us, you'll lose the vending community. And I really don't think the alleyway is the right thing to do. Unless you're willing again to advertise, Neon, come here, arrows pointing at us, people are not going to seek us out nor to interest us.
Appreciate it, thank you. Thanks for coming and sharing that.
Yep.
Anybody else that would like to address this item? Yes, sir. I know, right? It's a good salesman. If he can't sell hot dogs, I don't know.
I got a 25-foot long truck. I'm James Masfring. My wife and I own Jock's Tacos. First of all, thank you so much last year for allowing us to come out onto Woodward. We greatly appreciate it, and it is a huge part of our business. 30% of our business comes from the neighborhood behind us. They walk up and they come to us. 30% is the following that we've had for a couple of years, and 30% is traffic driving up and down Woodward. They stop, and we'd like to stay out there. I haven't seen the ordinance, so I don't know what's going on. No one's contacted us. We would like to stay where we are. If we're going to be moved, we would need to know where we're going. So that's all. Yeah, I'm on private property, and I didn't know if that affected us, the building.
The ordinance is for public spaces.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Okay, I'm sorry.
It would not affect you. That's correct.
Thank you so much.
Good tacos too, by the way. He didn't pay me to say that.
I guess the food truck got so big that not only will be in Royal Oak for a food truck rally this Wednesday, but we'll be in Ferndale next Wednesday. So we're excited to, we're really excited. I think the town's going to be filled up with a lot of people, and it'll just bring more and more people down to Ferndale. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Chris Johnston from Woodward Avenue Brewers in the Emory and the DIY Street Fair. I didn't read both ordinances. I just read the second one regarding spots in the library lot, the city hall lot.
Go ahead.
I'm in favor of food trucks being in Ferndale in general. I think it's a great idea. I think it adds a new dimension or a different dimension to Ferndale. I think that the resolution as written is a little too generous and a little too wide open. For our business, we pay $125 for each mechanical amusement device that we have in there. So a pool table and a jukebox cost us $250 for a year to operate those, and it seems to me that you're giving away basically a restaurant for the same price to, plus the $6 per day, to operate on any sunny day that somebody wants to. Business, brick and mortar businesses don't have the option of choosing what days they're open and closed. You know, we're open all the time. We pay rent. I pay $54,000 in city taxes every year to take care of trash, to do everything else, and it seems like the 250 is extremely low. And I'd like to see the city get as much money as they can, because that's, you know, what keeps everything great around here, as great as it is. So, not having read the first ordinance, I don't need answers for these things, but I'm wondering, are there set hours that you have, set days? They made it sound like the special events were not able to be done on those days. Is that correct, if that were to pass?
Vendors may not operate, same as the current ordinance, may not operate in areas closed for special events during special events. If they want to be vendors for special events, then they need to be vendors through the special event organizer.
Okay. Obviously, I'm for that, because, you know, it's not just so we can put on the event, it's so the people who do pay to be a food vendor, who help us put on the event, can benefit from all the advertising, everything that goes into that. That makes sense to me. You know, and to charge someone $6 a day for parking what the business would lose, or the city would lose from parking fees, you know, someone like Michael from Howes pays for those spots because their sidewalk cafe comes out, or we pay for our sidewalk cafe, that's area that we spend money on in addition to what we're already spending. It's not the only source of business that we have. So, again, I think that, you know, to just say, well, that's in line with what a sidewalk cafe costs, doesn't seem fair to me. And if you were to go ahead with using the city hall spots, I'm wondering if you would consider using the city hall spots that are for public employees, the city employees that don't have meters on them, so you're not losing any metered traffic throughout the day? And supposedly, there's sometimes during the weekends and weeknights when those aren't even being used anyway. And as someone who's tried to park in those spots, I've questioned, should I park here, should I not? So I, I think people are not parking them, so they're not really being fully utilized, if that's the case. Again, I'm for Ferndale to do as many different things as possible. I think it's great. I just think that this resolution, or the two resolutions, probably needs some closer eyeing over before they pass. Thank you.
Chris, thanks for coming.
Hi. Evening, Mike.
Michael Henderson from Howes Bayou. Some of what I was going to say has already been covered. I'm also not opposed to vendors entirely, but I just think giving them the cart blind the seven-day option is too generous. We're not collecting any property taxes, other fees from the vendors. We just learned about it on Friday. This is the first time I saw the wording, so it's all new to us. But, you know, to give them the permanent space in our downtown, they have a definite price advantage over the brick and mortar venues. They don't pay the property taxes, they don't pay the water, utility, the other fixed costs that we have. And so they're able to sell their goods at a lower price, and that's a competitive advantage for them. If they're not in the event like the DIY area, if they're just next to it, would that prohibit them from setting up? If they're adjacent to the area? Because the area, we have, part of the area is the spots on, actually, the parking spots on East Nine Mile, the north part of the lot, and the spots on Nine Mile. Those are outside of DIY events. So will they still be able to operate their truck?
Just to clarify that question, I mean, the ordinance as drafted, as it relates to the mobile vendors, would provide that those vendors are allowed to vend in all locations on public streets within the city, except for the downtown vending district, which is defined as the central business district under the zoning ordinance. So, to the extent that during a special event in the central business district is taking place-
It would not.
-that normal vendor would not be allowed in the downtown central business district without running through the special event.
The other thing I wanted to make note of is the other cities, calling Royal Oak and Birmingham to see if they would allow food trucks in there. They have an event once a month on the second Wednesday, which is a very successful event for the food vendors. And I support something like that, a special event for the food vendors rather than a seven-day option for them. I think that makes it a more interesting thing. I think the idea that they're having, coming to here next Wednesday, I think is exciting. But just to have them set up shop in our downtown, I think is, I don't like the idea. Joe from Adidas sent me a notice that said that he was welcome, resolution to explore the ramifications of such permits and allow a panel to be created. It seems rushed, and the business community has not been briefed on this matter in a formal manner, similar to the liquor license announcements via mail. And he said he feels strongly against permanent permits in this capacity. And I'm also concerned about how they would enforce, because if you give them a dedicated spot and you say, these two spaces are yours, how would, when they're not there, when they pull out their carts, which I would do on the second Wednesday, we turn up to go to Royal Oak, how do they, how do you secure those spots? Do they put up barriers, or is the police responsible for towing vehicles that are in those spots that were paid by those vendors?
That is a discussion that's underway among staff.
Okay. And also, I don't see any provisions for trash pickup and other services.
Yes, it's in the ordinance that they must take it with them. They may not use city-
I didn't see that.
-trash facilities at all. It's in there for both sidewalk and mobile.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Michael. Appreciate it. Welcome.
Hi. How you doing this evening? It's my first time at city council. I'm from Detroit Underdog, and I'm mainly concerned on how this is going to affect our new business that we recently purchased and put a lot of time and effort into. We are, right now, allowed to operate in front of the Rust Belt, Monday through Friday, 11 to 3, and behind Rosie's, Jason's Rosie's, during the evenings of Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. I guess if this does get passed, am I just not allowed to do these events, or those days?
So he's talking about a current license, which I don't-
I'm sorry.
He's talking about the current license for Detroit Underdog, and I'm not even sure that license was transferable, but that's something we'd have to consider.
Yeah, that would have to be reviewed.
Yeah.
But, under the new ordinance as proposed, the locations that are set forth in the resolution would be the locations that sidewalk vendors would be able to utilize on a first-come, first-served basis through the permitting process.
Correct.
Well, I guess since I purchased the business, would I have, I guess, first dibs at that opportunity? Since I'm currently permitted, well, Detroit Underdog is, is the business we bought.
Well, I guess, if I could, your honor, you're trying to answer that question. I'm not sure about your entity and whether the transfer, whether that license transferred with you. But putting that aside, the process of this ordinance proposes that vendors who wish to utilize in the central business district, in the downtown vending district, one of the locations that are being recommended by administration for either sidewalk vending or mobile vending, they would be entitled to apply for such location on a first-come, first-served basis, which would be reviewed for completeness by the clerk's office, and then, to the extent there were multiple applicants, it would be on a lottery basis.
I wouldn't expect that to be an issue this year.
Okay.
But I would address the issue of the transfer-
Of the transfer.
So you might want to get to the clerk's office sooner rather than later, just to make sure that all of that is proper.
Okay. Thank you very much. I do, you know, I've lived in Ferndale forever. I've worked in Ferndale all of my life, really, too. And, you know, it's a new business to me, like, it's my business. I understand it can affect bigger businesses, such as, you know, Howes Bayou and, you know, Woodward Avenue Brewery, in some ways, but, you know, we're selling hot dogs. We're not having people come in and sit down and have a meal. If you plan on going out to eat, you're going to go out to eat to one of those places. It's more of people passing by and saying, oh, you know, I would like a snack, I would like a hot dog. And that's what we want to do. It's very exciting to own a new business in Ferndale, and I'm really hoping to be here and be able to own a business in Ferndale. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I say one more thing?
Of course.
About, you know, I respect the brick and mortars, really. I mean, that is, I was kind of thinking about the piece of pie mentality, though. I really see Ferndale in the future being so busy, I mean, the growth has been pretty big, that big cities that have, you know, substantial streetwalkers have food carts. And the brick and mortars, I definitely don't want to upset the brick and mortars, because they do pay taxes, and I have business, other businesses also. The challenge with that, though, is if we get to the point to where we really, it's the, again, piece of pie. We need more pieces of pie. We don't need, there's not just so many pieces to share among us. So somehow, we need to develop through this whole industry enough, so we really make Ferndale what it needs to be. And second of all, about the events, I'm already applying for DIY and so forth, because I agree we should be in that event. But one thing I sense to you is I think that we should, the vendors that are in the city should be considered. Funky Ferndale wouldn't even consider me. We had a little bit of a-
I believe that's because of how late you applied.
Well, when I talked to Funky, actually, they let me have that spot, and their exact words were, we can't compete with your price, image, or quality, so you have to go. Even after they agreed, I could be at the Rust Belt, exact words. So when I moved, I will, willfully moved, but then I asked them about Royal Oak Art Fair, and I had to go for a different way for Clay Fest, because Funky, they didn't want to have me in. All I want to, I ask that we had, if we're an established vendor here, that we get consideration at those big events, and go pay the fee just like the rest of the event.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Your honor, can I just clarify a statement that was made earlier regarding the mobile vendors on private property? Those types of activities, that type of vending on private property, would be still subject to the underlying zoning with respect to parking for the principal business. So, you know, I'm not sure what location you're at, but there could still be zoning and other codes that do apply to that establishment, to the extent that they utilize all the parking for that principal business.
Yeah. Currently where we park, I'm sorry, currently where we park, they're not open on Saturdays or Sundays, and I was with the owner over the weekend, and there appears, there appears to be eight spots that are in the parking lots.
I just wanted to point out, it would have to be looked at, but I just wanted to-
That was something that I did ask.
Put that caveat out there.
Okay.
Christina?
Thank you. Specifically relating to mobile vending, Section 7-83A10, I know that you had modified the hours, but one of the other recommendations that we realized over the last week that is not in here, is that we did actually recommend that it only be for the mobile food truck vendors one day a week within this area. So that was based on the Business Development Committee's review earlier on, actually, a couple of months ago, in sending that forward. So I don't know if that was overlooked, or if that was maybe an issue of, an illegal issue as to why you would not be able to restrict it to a certain day or days.
May I ask a clarification question?
Sure.
Your point, when you're, just to clarify, you're suggesting one day a week that all vendors have one day a week, that they, the mobile vendors that they would sell, and the other six would be, so it's not like one a day, it would be-
Right. Exactly.
Similar to the model other cities are using.
Exactly.
Thanks, Clifford.
Dan, or Sherilyn, was that a pension?
I don't recall that recommendation.
I don't recall ever seeing that recommendation either.
Oh, okay.
Sorry. I guess it didn't get to us.
So, I mean, I guess, just to follow up on that a little bit more, to the extent that that is a recommendation that council wishes to be reviewed, I mean, that could be done. I mean, it is likely that some balance could be struck with respect to that. I mean, the, this is essentially commercial activity, and there is certain, as long as the regulation is open from a time, place, and manner standpoint of serving a substantial governmental interest, it could be regulated. So, you know, the specifics of that limitation of use is ultimately up to council.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. How are you? Jeff King, Woodward Imperial. First, I'd like to say I do support vendors. I do support, I'm very pro-business and new business, as I am currently new business. I just believe that we need to think about what we were just, you were just discussing about time limitations, day limitations. I think one of the essential elements of being a mobile business and a mobile food cart is that you are mobile. I do see a situation where if Ferndale is a growing area, and I am very much for growth, that you give an opportunity for a new business to become a permanent part of Ferndale by being able to pull into the same spot every day, seven days a week, from beginning of business to the end of business. And then what you're essentially doing is you're giving an opportunity for a very inexpensive way to possibly hurt some of the other businesses that have far more investment. But I do like, again, I like to reiterate, I am very pro-vendor, and I'd like to see us to talk about possibly two or three days a week in a specific spot as an event that I believe actually would help the vendors be more of an attraction, as something that you would do in Ferndale on a Thursday night at 8 o'clock, everybody shows up. And it helps the businesses and the city as an event that would help maybe times that could be busier. So, I just wanted to throw that in there, and thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thanks, Jeff. Appreciate it. I guess I have a question, and I'm not sure who this goes to. Maybe it's Christine and Sherilyn, I'm not sure, but it's a question of timing. I know it's, it was almost 70 today, so it feels like this should be starting tomorrow, but it really isn't spring yet. So, what is our timing in terms of when we need to get this done? And I ask only because, I guess I am struck by, since we had this discussion two weeks ago, and one of the questions I asked was, was the vendors had weighed in, and apparently they didn't have an opportunity, or didn't feel like they did. And some of the businesses tonight telling us that they only heard about this on Friday. I'm wondering if we have an opportunity from a timing perspective to allow these folks, and this last issue in particular as well, that we hadn't maybe fully vetted, from a timing perspective, do we have an opportunity to allow for additional comments? Are we up against it? What is your perspective about that? Maybe I'll start with Sherilyn.
Let me say there, I apologize if people feel like they just found out. We actually began this process, you were at the DDA meeting, Mayor, last year, I want to say, early fall. I remember Jeff King was there, and he spoke about this. And from that point, I was told that the DDA was breaking into their business roundtable, and from there, they, or not business roundtable, but their business development group took it up, and then I was told from there, they broke into a subcommittee. I never saw, you know, an invitation to those meetings, but I assume that's when the bricks[1743.33] I never saw, you know, an invitation to those meetings, but I assume that's when the bricks and mortar businesses were, you know, being introduced to this. So, in, in terms of time and how you guys want to handle it, it's, it's up to council. This whole process came about because last summer, we got a lot of interest in people vending. Our current ordinance doesn't address it very well. From an administrative standpoint, it was a bit chaotic. We had people, you know, wanting to change their locations every week and add on locations and hours and, you know, we were just hoping to streamline the process. Whatever you guys want is fine with me and if we need to take more time to do it, we could do that. I, I would look to Dan though to see, you know, in the meantime, are we going to allow on nice days, those vendors with current licenses to, to go about their business as currently permitted? So, short answer is whatever you want.
I appreciate that. And let me also add, it was chaotic last year and your office faced the brunt of it. So I appreciate what you're saying and we need to get out in front of this early. So I don't, I don't mean to imply that this process is late, but it does, I assumed like you did that some of the brick and mortar businesses and some of the vendors had been notified, had an opportunity for input and I guess I'm hearing tonight that they don't feel like they did anyway, whether they did or not, they don't feel like they did. And so I do appreciate the work that, that your department did and continues to do about that. Dan?
I would just like to add on to that. I, I, I know this can be very frustrating and certainly we've talked about this a number of times, but I, I would share my disappointment that so many entities hadn't had the opportunity to express their concern as have just come up in the last couple of days. I don't know that I'm comfortable moving forward with this at this time, based on that, and I would like to, to make sure that every stakeholder gets an opportunity to pitch in and, and give their feedback on this. So I, I'm not sure I would be comfortable, so I'm not sure if we have a, we need a motion to, to table this or-
I have, through the chair, I have a couple of comments too.
Counselwoman Piana?
I concur that we need to take a step back and tighten up some details in both of these. And I think the DDA and the city need to clarify roles and responsibilities about creating new ordinances and how that information and feedback gets transferred from one entity to the other. But overall, I think how I've interpreted the issues here is that we have a difference in, in models. When all these vendors started coming to us, it was a, I call it dispersed location model. People chose their location. And now what we've heard is that best practices with mobile vendors and sidewalk vendors is clustering. There's a clustering model and that businesses tend to do better when they're near together. So what I'm hearing from the vendors today is that they prefer being closer to foot traffic, near the bricks and mortar businesses that drive that foot traffic.
Wasn't there.
So, who prefer not to have them there. So we're looking, so this is the, this is the challenge with balancing the needs of both types of businesses. And I think that's where we're, we need to tweak a little bit. What I've heard, the clustering model is the preferred method by other cities with some flexibility to, to address certain circumstances. So, I also think we need to look at the, the fee model. So, in terms of public spaces, we've looked at replacing parking fees versus renting parking spots. And that's a different model too, and perhaps that's somewhere the, I can go back to the drawing board and, and look at some of the, the costs. Because what I've heard today from businesses is that the cost factor is a little unfair. So, those are my areas of desire before it comes back to council again.
I, I would add on the cost model though. This was never meant to be a moneymaker for the city. We're not, we're not going to get rich on the mobile cart fees.
No.
And so that wasn't in our intent.
As with any other city fees, it's intended to cover our costs.
Cover our costs. And hopefully, it generates some additional folks coming downtown and hopefully supporting and enhancing our brick and mortar. I, I would hope. If it doesn't do that after a certain amount of time, I guess we could revisit the whole idea of doing this in the first place. But I just want to address, you know, I understand that, that it's, they don't pay property taxes and they don't pay, they don't make the investment that others do, but it wasn't our intent to, to make them do that. I don't think they could do it financially, frankly. But it was to hopefully generate additional foot traffic to town that might end up going in-house by you or some other place, if it worked well, if it, if it worked well. So, I, just on that point, it, it's not intended as a, as a way for the, this financially strapped city to make money. That was never the intent of this. Christina, did you want to?
Yeah, I just wanted to note that, you know, it typically what I would like to do is be able to bring this to our DDA Board of Directors. They haven't had a chance to review it at the board level, they've only been reviewing it at the committee level.
Okay.
And at the committee level, we've only really been looking at the language of the ordinance, the first ordinance that establishes it, not the fee structure. We only received the fee structure really this week, this past, or this past week. So we haven't had a chance to review that specifically. We did, did request that fees be more equitable and fair based on bricks and mortar and, and vendors that are coming in. So, what that fair number is, nobody had a, you know, a pinpoint number at that point in time either, so. But, you know, some of the members that were on that committee do include Jeff King, as well as Michael Hennes, Michelle Foster, and folks that make up a mix of businesses and a, including different types of businesses besides just food. Because when we're talking about street cart vendors, they could be more than food. So we want to make sure that we're thinking broader as well.
And, and I do want to add that, because I heard from members, business owners today that are not on the DDA board or committees, and if there's a way to notify them that a meeting is happening so that they feel like they, there's a place for their, for vendors and for people who are not on the DDA board, I think that, I know we're adding to this process and, but I think that would be helpful. I think they, they clearly have a desire to express themselves and offer their input. And so if we, if, if between the two of us, we can figure out a way to notify folks, that would be very helpful.
I would say with ordinances, what's easier for us is the fact that we can put it then on our DDA Board of Directors' agenda and have that in time to process that through and send that out, because we are also posting that we're having a DDA Board of Directors' meeting. And they can go and, and find out what is on that agenda, as well as you have your city, obviously you have all of your agendas on your city website. So that is then the second, it could be then the second step of where people can look for information.
If, if I may, Mr. Mayor, just one more thing. I think going back to, I want to underline a point that Councilwoman Piana made, it does come back to goals and have, or roles, sorry, and having those documented, because when we've reviewed these before, and if I see the DDA has looked at it, I would presume that that's been fully vetted, but, you know, now I have a better understanding of how that works. So I think as we, these things come up, if we could document what the expectations and roles are for each organization, I think that would help cut down on this in the future.
If I may, Your Honor, piggyback on what Councilmember Martin just said. At this point, I feel like my office and Mr. Chris have gone as far as we can with the input we've gotten. This issue affects the DDA far more than it affects my office. All I'm doing is the licensing. I, I would love to know what those roles and expectations are, because it's been, it's, it's a tough process when you've got two different groups with two very competing goals and I, I guess at this point, I, I would like to just sit back and put this on hold until the DDA board maybe presents a proposed ordinance or, or specifications including a fee schedule. Because this is something my office ended up, you know, taking on and, and trying to work. And I, I feel like obviously we've missed it somewhat and I'm not sure, even with some of the direction I've got last night, I feel like it's still a little vague clustering with some exceptions, not sure what those exceptions are, parking fees versus renting parking spaces. I've gotten some feedback that the fees are too low, but I haven't heard what would be more equitable.
I think that's what would happen at the next convening of the stakeholders to assess those details or review those details and come up with some suggestions to tweaks to the ordinance draft. That's how I interpret that.
Would the stakeholders be every business in the downtown and every vendor? Or, I mean, I thought going by committees was the way to do it and, and obviously that hasn't worked. And I'm hearing a lot that we want everybody notified. So, I, I'm looking for a lot more direction from council at this point about what you want my next step to be.
I think that's fair. If I may clarify, my comments weren't to criticize your office or-
And I don't take them that way. I just really need to know how to move forward.
I think that's understandable.
Well, I mean, I, we have sort of a nascent, you know, business niche here that Ferndale is uniquely suited, I think, to take advantage of. And if we wait, you know, one thought is that if we wait and have this thing vetted through, you know, different committees of the DDA and then the ordinance committee up here and then the board of the DDA and make sure that we get ahold of every single business in the city, my guess is we're going to miss the summer, you know, vending season. So, you know, if we're going to take that type of approach, then I think, you know, what we should say is that you can only have these vending things on private property for 2012 or for some, until some set period, Fourth of July or, or something, and then just work through these processes. Or, we could adopt something and then work through it for the following year. You know, I don't know. I mean, the process I'm hearing outlined this evening is not something, I think, that can come back at the next regularly scheduled city council meeting. And my guess is, it's not something that can be fully worked through in a month or, or perhaps two months. So, you know, I, I think we have to make some decisions here. Are we going to go forward with perhaps an imperfect thing that we could, you know, perhaps tweak with limited additional input at the next regularly scheduled meeting? Or are we going to sort of throw up our hands and say, you know, this requires a lot more work and, you know, just set it off to a, a later date, in which case we're not going to have vending on public property for some significant portion of this season, which I think would be a shame.
I don't, if I may, I don't think anybody wants that. I think option A, that you outlined is the, you know, is the way to go. I think we, we can get additional feedback. I'm not sure when your next meeting is.
Our next board meeting isn't until April. We meet the second Thursday of the month. In our committee meeting, we would have to organize a, a separate, a special committee meeting in order to even review it once before that, because we don't have a meeting set up already before that next board meeting, unfortunately. Just in terms of the timing.
Second Thursday in April is after the second Monday, so we would be, if, if we're going to take the, the DDA's input, the earliest we could adopt something would be April 23rd, if action, an action item, or, you know, if a decision was made at, at the 12th with the DDA.
Yeah, because April 12th, that would be the board meeting. We, we tentatively have a committee that, meeting that is set for the 11th, which is the day before, which really isn't enough time for the board meeting probably. It would be for wrapping things up before the board meeting. So we would have to schedule something like in this next week to, you know, over the next week and week and a half to get that in, in order to be prepared for our board. Otherwise, you're talking about May as the next possible. Because we don't, I mean, we don't typically hold special meetings unless we really need to for the board.
Well, I mean, if, if we care about mobile vendors, and, and that's a decision we can make up here, we care or we don't care about them. But if we care about them, I think late May is too late to reach some decision.
To the chair, I have a question. Do our current vendors have one-year licenses and when do they expire?
Mine expires June 19.
June 19?
I just want to know where it goes Saturday.
So, I'm sorry, would you like me to answer?
Yes, please. We issued one-year licenses from the date of issuance, so they expire at various times.
And when do those start? It sounds like I'm hearing June. So June-
No, they're, they're currently, they are currently in effect.
Okay.
They expire and then they can apply to be-
When did they, I guess, start? When, when would-
A year ago from when they-
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Last year was the first year we started getting these applications.
Right.
I guess is what I'm saying.
Right, so we issued them a one-year license based on the ordinance, so this June, those one-year licenses will be expiring.
June would be the first.
How many are there altogether? Mobile cart?
Please?
So, what is your question?
When did we issue the first one? Last year?
I, I couldn't give you an exact date.
But it wasn't, was it April?
No, it wasn't that early.
I don't want to put you in the spot, right?
It wasn't that early.
We don't, we're not, the question is simply, are we in the, are we in the danger of having licenses expire next week, next month?
Well, even if they did, we have an ordinance.
We have an existing ordinance, that's right.
Probably the first one was, probably the first one was probably approved after the Rust Belt market opened, which they opened in May. So, I would say sometime af-, you know, within the month of May or June were the first ones that were issued.
Okay. Well, what I'm hearing is that council, if I'm hearing right, the council is not ready to move on these two items this evening. The process of moving this along is going to need to be determined and I, I guess my hope is that we'll have discussions between now and the next meeting, the next council meeting, where we will discuss, we'll revisit this issue, I guess I'll look at the city manager. Can we revisit this issue at the next council meeting and, and make a decision on moving this process? With all consideration to what Councilman Galloway is saying, we can't, you know, it's not fair to the vendors to wait till May. We need an expedited process of some sort. What meetings that includes and how that gets happened, we can sort through in the next two weeks.
I think I'm going to echo some of the things that Clerk Tomlin had mentioned, that the city itself is more concerned about process and ensuring that we don't have a rehash of last year, which was every other week we had somebody coming and revisiting the situation. So I think that I would suggest that we seek a formal recommendation from the DDA on what changes or what other parts of this ordinance that need to be adjusted, at least so that at that point we're on the same page with the DDA and we can make that determination. So I, I would seek a formal recommendation from the DDA to bring back to, to staff and or council to have that discussion, so that at least we know where those who are in the DDA district stand and we can go from there. But I think a formal recommendation from the DDA is necessary at this point. But again, for the sake of where the city stands, we're more concerned about process.
Well, and, and having gone through this process last year, the process did not work well. I mean, it was frustrating with people coming up here, didn't know what corner they were supposed to be on, what time they were supposed to be there, how it was going to work. I mean, it was chaotic and that's not fair to our staff. So, I would suggest that my preference is going to be that we have this tabled definitely until the first regularly scheduled meeting in April. And if we don't get a recommendation to, a process that works differently than the one that's recommended, then I'm going to, this council person is going to be ready to go forward with this recommendation, perhaps with some slight adjustments to the language. But we're not going to go through this process, you know, last year's process this summer and the process like the dream, or, you know, the interest in this, like the dream cruise is not going away and we've got to get a handle on it. And we're not going to be screwing around with people trying to figure out what street corner, at what times they're supposed to be and who they're in competition with and is it public or private and what, you know, that's not going to happen. So, at least if I have anything to say about it. So, I suggest that whoever is a stakeholder, make their views known to us by the first regularly scheduled meeting in April. And I would move that we table this agenda item to that date definitely and take this thing up again.
And that includes what, the formal recommendation from the DDA?
Well, I mean, we're talking, yeah, I would love to have-
I would include that in there.
I would love to have that, but we don't, can we force them to make a formal recommendation?
We're requesting one through the-
Yeah, right, request one.
We could go from there if we don't have it by that date.
That sounded like a motion to me.
Can you, can you repeat it?
My motion is to table this agenda item. I would table that we, I would move that we table consideration of ordinance numbers one, 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 nine, 1120 and 1121, amending chapter seven of the business regulations of the Ferndale Code of Ordinances until the first regularly scheduled meeting in April. And respectfully requested the DDA their input on those ordinances at that time.
Christina? Well, hang on, is there a second? Is there a support?
Support.
There is support. Moved by Galloway, supported by Piana. Christina?
April 9th would be the first council meeting, which would be before the DDA board meeting. April 12th is the DDA board meeting, but there is a budget hearing on April 16th. Or not hearing, but a budget work, budget workshop, excuse me. So it could maybe come, maybe with that meeting, potentially?
I'd prefer not to include anything else on the budget meetings. Those are really in-depth and time-intensive discussions, so I, I'd like to dedicate that to the budget discussions.
Okay, well then I would recommend- Okay, well, then I would recommend April 23rd then, as a regular city council meeting. Because otherwise, our board will have no time to have input on this. I mean, we won't be able to pull together our information that you're requesting in that amount of time.
Galloway, is this your motion?
Well, I mean, I guess my thought would be...
It's only two weeks. I think we can accommodate the 23rd. That's my feeling, and it still meets your requirements.
Yeah, well, that's, I was going to say that moving it back two weeks, I don't think is catastrophic, but I also think that means that we're not going to have the luxury of kicking the can down the road another two weeks. So if we get up here and the presentation or the recommendation isn't a firm one, or we have a split amongst the business community, you know, again, I think we're getting into a territory where we're going to start having the old process forced upon us, and that's not going to be workable. So I just think that leaves us less margin for error. I think it still works. I mean, presumably, we're not going to have a lot of 70-degree days between now and then, but...
But through the Chair, there's still license, and I agree with that, and we should make a decision on the 23rd. I don't think anyone up here wants to be dealing with this through the summer again.
No.
That gives plenty of time. We make a decision on the 23rd, and that's, that's it.
So, amend your motion to the 23rd?
Yes.
Support. Amend your support.
Amen my...
Thanks, okay. Let's vote on the motion.
Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Colter?
Yes, thank you. That motion passes. Now we are on regular agenda item E, and I'm going to look to Councilman Galloway, because I'm going to assume that we're going to make a similar motion on E.
Yeah, I would move that we, just so folks watching, item E is the resolution regarding some of the more, well, the fees for these mobile vending and sidewalk vending. And I would move that we table that discussion to April 23rd as well, with a recommendation requested of the DDA.
Second.
Been moved by Galloway, supported by Martin. Discussion on that item. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmembers Martin?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Mayor Colter?
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted, which is tabled. And finally, now regular agenda item F, which was former consent agenda item 7A. Councilman Martin, you pulled that item.
Thank you. I did pull 7A attachment to, with regards to the minutes that included the fiscal year 13 council priorities. There was one piece of language that I don't think got captured in the feedback, and that is under personnel. And the statement indicates implement annual employee survey to solicit performance feedback. And we kind of discussed it wasn't performance feedback, it was employee engagement or employee satisfaction, which got covered in the outcomes but not in the goal, and I just want to make sure we correct that.
Perfect, thank you.
Yep, good.
I would move that we adopt the city council minutes of Monday, February 27th, with the corrections noted by Councilman Martin.
Support.
Moved by Galloway, supported by Piana. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yep.
Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Colter?
Yes, thank you. Those minutes are adopted. That brings us to call to council. I'm looking around, and I see the police chief, Chief Collins. Anything additional for us this evening?
Additional?
All right. Byron for Tities, DPW, anything for the, Byron, anything for the good of the group this evening?
No.
I saw that.
I was talking about Allen.
All right.
That's the truth.
I'm not questioning you. Joe, anything from the Recreation Department this evening? Very good. Derek, anything further from your area?
Just real quickly, Sherilyn sent out an email on behalf of our department this afternoon to you guys with a save the date card for the Oakland County One-Stop Ready program. They are moving forward into the second phase, which is they want to seek input from the elected officials, the planning commissions, staff, fire marshals. Actually, it's kind of a shotgun approach, it appears, to seek input and discuss the roles everybody has and plays in economic development in a local community. So you'll see that, you've seen the save the date card. It's April 12th, 7:00 to 8:30, and we anticipate more information from the county to shortly follow with hopefully a little more specificity to it. I've had at least one request for information about the program. We forwarded that on to Oakland County, and as soon as we have it, we will forward it to all of you. So, thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. Oh, Byron.
I did remember.
You did remember, all right.
It's going to be warm.
Yes.
First Monday in April is the start of compost season. And I'm sure everybody has been asking about that, so you can, don't rake your leaves in the street. That's just the fall.
Right.
Because we occasionally get that. So you can put them in your container with the yard waste stickers, or you can put them in the craft bags. But it's always the first Monday in April, and then it goes through the third Friday in December. So...
Good to know, because folks were out raking their dead leaves and...
Yeah, you know, and with this weather being as warm as it's going to be this week, I know we're going to have them in the streets, so...
And Byron, are we going to do the compost pickup at the city yard?
Yes, yes.
When does that begin?
I'm trying to think. It's always the two weeks in May. I think it's, I believe it's the first two weeks, but I know it's in May, and it's from 8:00 to 12:00. It's before Memorial Day. It's either the 2nd or 3rd, or the 1st and 2nd, but I will come back with an answer.
That's a great service we've got.
Oh, yeah, it's, what the councilman's referring to is you can go to Southwest Storage Yard, and you can bring a pickup truck, you can bring whatever, and we will load you with free compost, which we receive from Sacra, which is a result of all the leaves that we put at the curb.
Great. Thanks, Byron. Our city clerk, Sherilyn?
Nothing further.
No, okay, thanks. The election went smoothly?
It did, thank you.
Awesome, thanks. City manager, April McGrath.
We're on Facebook. It's official. City of Ferndale, Michigan. We encourage everybody to participate that has a Facebook account, and hopefully we'll give you updates as well as any news. We are also on Twitter with our handle is, I have to look it up here, hang on. It's @Ferndale, @FerndaleMichigan, but without the N, at the end of Michigan. I know, it's weird. So it's Ferndale, M-I-C-H-I-G-A-N. So we will, hoping to populate Facebook and Twitter account with lots of information on the city of Ferndale, and we are very excited to be in the 21st century, I guess. So thank you very much to Joe, who helped facilitate that project, so we're very excited.
Thank you. Thank you. City Attorney, Dan Krecht.
I have nothing this evening, Your Honor.
All right. Councilman Martin?
Two very quick things. I just want to thank everyone, the people who showed up, and the participants who came to Ferndale Rotary's first annual winter warm-up this week, or last week. It was on Thursday, and I don't have the final totals yet, but many thousands of dollars were raised for scholarships for students in our school district. So that was a great event, and for a first year, we had a very nice turnout. And secondly, we're approaching grant season for the Ferndale Community Foundation, and just to, for area nonprofits to start putting their thinking caps on about grants, we should have applications available by the end of March 1st through April.
Very good, thank you. Councilwoman Piana?
Yes, a couple things. Tomorrow, the Planning Commission is going to be reviewing the Woodward Avenue Action Association's Transit Oriented Development Plan. And this was a culmination of work completed over a year between the cities of Ferndale and Birmingham, and I want to direct it council to take a look at that plan, so you at least have two weeks to review it prior to the next council meeting, because it's coming to council for review and approval. And we will have Executive Director Heather Carmona here to walk us through this plan. So I encourage you to ask your questions and be ready for two weeks. So I'm really excited about it, because it's really pulling together economic development strategies and land use approaches between all the communities, so that we're working stronger together to improve the corridor. The other item is, I had a question for either, it's Derek or Christina. The stop signs at Troy and Ellen were removed, but now they're back, and I was wondering what was happening? So could someone explain? I've seen people blow through that spot now, because they thought that the stop signs were gone, but they're there.
That was a temporary traffic control order. It did expire on the 1st of the month, and it was on my list to get in front of council for, our intention is to put it there permanently, but apparently the DPW worked more efficiently than I thought they would, and it was removed at the exact time that it was supposed to be removed. I thought that I had some lag time, so we are now, I had it replaced there again today, because I don't want to confuse the motoring public. And at the next city council meeting, you can expect a request to make that permanent.
Okay, so the stop signs will stay there for a while?
It's back, and if council so chooses it from my recommendation, it shall remain permanently.
No argument from me.
And then my final comment is, I just wanted to really thank April and Joe, I don't know who pronounced his last name well, what is it? Gauchau. Gauchau. For actually launching communication improvements that council has so long desired to have happen, and you launched three, you had a trifecta launch, and I was really, really pleased. But I also wanted to thank resident Kevin Deegan Kraus, who did some background research with his honor roll students. I think it's in the E citizens class, I probably got that wrong, but his students did a lot of background research on what were the best practices for social media policies for cities, and the city was able to tap into that to craft good policies for us. So I wanted to thank him and the students for helping the city out.
Thank you. Councilman Galloway?
At the last city council meeting, we were talking about the great success of the school millage, thanks to Chief Collins and others, a lot of others throughout the town. And all of us up here realize that a city in many ways is only as strong as its school district and the involvement of the community within that district, and we want to support that. That's one of our goals for this coming year. A new group has formed, Clear, and they're meeting for the first time this Wednesday at 6:00 PM in the library. I think it's a spinoff or a growth of that bond committee. Their mission, their stated mission is to serve as a voice for all Ferndale Public School stakeholders by supporting efforts to build a stable and inclusive community, promote citizen leadership in school matters, create conditions for excellence in education, guarantee the accountability of those entrusted to lead the school district, and ensure those representatives responsiveness to citizen concerns. So it's hard to be against any of those things. I don't know too much about the group, but I intend to find out this Wednesday at 6:00 at the library. That's it.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick things. I had the pleasure of being at John D., at a special preview party at John D., which if you don't recognize the name, is the former Club Art. And I just want to encourage you to check it out. It's a really cool spot. They did some amazing things with the interior. It's a Ron Ray design, if you know that interior designer, he's done a number of things in the area. Really nice place, has the feel of Club Arts. The stage hasn't moved, but almost everything else is different. I encourage you to check it out. Put this on folks' radar, on March 29th, the Chamber is hosting the State of the City address, which I'll be delivering on March 29th at Valentine Vodka. The address is at 7:00. There's a preview from 5:30 to 7:00 for folks who want to meet our department heads. It's a good opportunity to talk with our various department heads, if you want to take advantage of that. And it will also be taped, so it'll be played on cable after that. So folks want to check out the State of the City, that'll be on March 29th. Finally, I would just say, go Spartans. By the time we meet again, hopefully we'll have a national champion in Michigan. And with that, our meeting is adjourned.